Thank you very much for your service.
Thank you. All right, I'll just say a few words about Kirsten. Kirsten actually took over for Pat Boyer when she retired, so Kirsten's been supervising in our, well, we're calling it our behavioral health division now, so, um, chemical health, mental health, adult protection. Amazing, she's filled Pat's footsteps, uh, just amazing, and we couldn't be more pleased to have her in that position. But prior to that, she worked for a full nineteen years in an health. So, she has just amazing expertise working with folks who, um, may be at risk of civil commitment and needs of services in the community, um, and so, yes, we are certainly delighted to have her in her new role and offering that expertise, so, thank you Kirsten. Thank you.
And with that, with all the John Burkle, twenty-five years of service. Didn't know whether it was you or not. John, thank you so much for twenty-five years of service in the Sheriff's Department.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
So, a few words about John. John's currently assigned to our investigations division, work in narcotics investigations. Uh, he started, he was assigned patrol, uh, originally, and then he went into warrants transports for a bit. Uh, after warrants transports, he got into narcotics investigations, and there was a time where he had to actually be put back out on the road. Uh, probably not the, probably not the funnest thing he wanted to do, but...
But we did his work to work.
Yeah, he had to go back to work, exactly. But he did it without a complaint, and then, uh, he eventually got back into narcotics investigations again. So, thank you, John, for your twenty-five years of service, and, uh, we're looking forward to knowing twenty-five more.
Yeah.
I always like these, get to know some of our employees.
Stayed for a meeting.
They're down. Next thing, we've got citizens to be heard. Any comments from any of the citizens? Okay. Approval of the minutes for February the eighteenth.
Who to approve?
Motion to approve in a second by Kevin. All in favor?
Aye.
Post, motion carried. Approval of payment of bills.
Move approval.
Second.
Got a motion by Jim, second by Grant. All in favor?
Aye.
Post, motion passes. Solid Waste Kirk Rosenberg. Got an annual update and... That's another personal last week.
I guess not, so... Uh, Kevin asked me to, uh, put together a thank you letter, so I'm gonna pass that around, uh, to have you all sign it. Uh, if you liked the letter, Steve and I wrote it, if you don't like the letter, I wrote it. So, uh, it's essentially, it's to the, uh, the folks that we met with, so, I greatly appreciate your time, uh, that you spent, uh, last week. I think it was, uh, well done, well spent.
Well, you had it pretty well planned out there, Kirby, and, uh, some good meetings there out there.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, so essentially, what I want to do here, just very, very briefly, is just give you an update, uh, on our solid waste department from last year. Um, there's not a lot new, we talked about a lot of these things last week, so, um, we'll, we'll go through it again. If you have any questions, please feel free to, uh, ask the questions. Um, as you, uh, know, the solid waste department has seven point five, uh, full-time employees. Uh, we have three roster employees and three roster employees that, uh, work at the household house waste facility, electronics collection, and then the, uh, plastic bag, uh, collection, uh, for us. Uh, we hire approximately four seasonal employees at the landfill, uh, during the summer. Uh, usually they're high school kids, uh, that, uh, work out there. Uh, two years ago, we hired, uh, Hunter, uh, Zenzem from, uh, Barnesville, he's gonna go play Division One, uh, football, uh, down at Iowa State, uh, this next year. Uh, this last summer, uh, we hired, uh, four from Holly, and, uh, they went zero and eleven in their football team, so there's no correlation there, uh, working at the landfill. Uh, we also have, uh, three to four, uh, volunteer groups that come out in the spring to pick up paper bags, uh, and plastic bags as well, it's quite a mess out there, uh, once the snow goes down. Uh, it's something that we've done in the past, and it's, uh, been pretty well received. Uh, the budget is generally, uh, this last year's about six point five million dollars. Um, it generally covers everything that we've been doing. Uh, one of the things that we did do this last year, Kevin and Grant, we worked very, very, uh, hard to, uh, look at the tipping fees and also the service fees. Uh, we raised the tipping fee last year at five dollars a ton. Uh, I would expect that we'll, uh, take another look at it again this year, and we may have to, uh, take a look at it, uh, again. Um, the, uh, handout that I, uh, handed out to you is just a kind of a, uh, update of what, uh, most of it's from our annual report, we're required to, uh, submit a, uh, annual report to the PCA, uh, on our landfill. One of the things that I don't have included in the, uh, information that I provided to you is, is that we did, uh, have to get an air quality permit, uh, at the landfill, uh, this past year. Uh, that was a new requirement. Uh, we, uh, we got the, uh, permit, and, uh, we, uh, haven't had any, uh, issues or problems with the air quality. Um, the first table at the top, it talks about the volumes of, uh, waste that we actually manage. As you can see, it's, uh, quite a wide variety of, uh, material that we actually take in at the landfill. Uh, we also have an industrial waste management plan, uh, that kind of restricts specifically the, uh, the amount of industrial waste that we can bring into, and the types of industrial waste that we can bring into the landfill. Uh, two thousand nineteen, we placed, uh, fifty-two thousand, two hundred forty-four tons of waste into the, uh, landfill, nine bags of asbestos, uh, which has to be, uh, handled separately and, uh, specially, special, especially, and then six hundred and sixty-two cubic yards of demolition waste. Uh, we're trying real hard to keep the demolition waste out of the landfill as much as possible, but, uh, it, it has, uh, been, uh, a real challenge. Of that, uh, fifty-two thousand, uh, tons of incoming waste, approximately fifteen thousand tons of it was, uh, alternative daily cover. Uh, that was in the form of, uh, contaminated soil, uh, ash, uh, from American Crystal, um, fines from, um, Perum, and also, uh, uh, sawdust from Lund boats. Uh, the sawdust, uh, helps with the odor issue out there quite a bit. Uh, we utilized approximately fifty-four thousand, uh, cubic yards of, uh, landfill space, uh, the way we, uh, determine that, actually, this year, uh, previously, we, we'd done, uh, surveys, but this, uh, past year, we actually used a drone, uh, to look at the, uh, the amount of, uh, material or space that we used. Uh, the one thing that we do do is the, uh, the in-compact, uh, in-place compaction rate is about thirteen hundred, uh, pounds per cubic yard, which is very, very good. You go to these big commercial sites, uh, in the metro area, that's, that's comparable to what they're giving. Uh, what that does is that, obviously, the, uh, greater that compaction rate is, the, uh, the more material, uh, you can get into the, uh, the landfill. Um, I attribute that, uh, to two things. Number one, um, Wayne, uh, who is the, uh, primary compact operator, he, uh, he does just a phenomenal job, but then the other thing is, is that we, uh, as you all remember, we purchased a new, uh, compactor about three years ago, and it's a bigger compactor than what we had, uh, before. Uh, the PCA, uh, used to call our previous compactor a matchbox, uh, compactor, so, um, they're, they're much more pleased with that. Uh, the one thing that I, I'm always reluctant to, uh, talk about is how much, what the remaining capacity is, uh, based on, and this is really important, based on the compaction rate and based on the incoming, incoming amount of waste that comes into the, uh, um, uh, facility last year, uh, we have approximately fifty years left. But again, that number is real fluid, and I wouldn't put a lot of emphasis in that. Uh, on the next page, uh, I, I wanted to talk a little bit about the well monitoring. Uh, we have a very, very extensive, uh, well monitoring program out there. Um, uh, it's just, it's very, very, very extensive. Um, one of the things that, uh, we continue to look at are volatile organic compounds. Um, things that, uh, are familiar to you would be, uh, things like, uh, formaldehyde. Um, they, uh, turn up, they have been turning up in the wells, uh, but it's not significant. Uh, the other thing that, uh, we, uh, have been having some new hits, uh, in particular are vinyl chlorides. Uh, the vinyl chlorides, uh, come from plastic products and, uh, things like packaging, things that, like that. Um, we, uh, have not exceeded, uh, any of the, uh, limits, uh, from the PCA's perspective, they haven't been concerned, but, uh, we always are looking at the, uh, the, uh, levels to make sure that we're within the, uh, limits and also to ensure the safety of the area. Uh, we also have had some, uh, inorganic, uh, exceedances, uh, the primary, uh, arsenic and magnesium. Um, they're, they're basically naturally occurring out there, so it's, uh, it's nothing that's unusual at all. Uh, we also have had some hits on nitrates. Nitrates are primarily from the agricultural activity that's been going on out there. As far as the activities that we, uh, have had out there, the household house waste collection, uh, as you, uh, can read, uh, we collected from about twenty-one hundred, uh, homes this past year, and approximately a hundred and seven thousand pounds of household house waste, and approximately six thousand aerosol, uh, containers. Uh, product exchange, we had about, uh, a thousand participants, and, um, we used significant amount of, uh, material, or we exchanged it, or people used it and took it. Uh, the total amounts compared to, uh, two thousand eighteen, the collections were down about thirteen, uh, three percent, and, uh, the five percent exchange, uh, tonnage was down as well, but compared to two thousand seventeen amounts, they were up. Uh, the recycling activities that we had, uh, the pumpkins were up, uh, four tons from last year, this is a, uh, activity that still boggles my mind. Uh, twenty-eight tons of, uh, pumpkins is significant. Uh, the pumpkins that we've talked about, that are collected in all the communities, uh, they're taken to, um, uh, organic farm where they're composted and, uh, it's handled in a responsible manner. Uh, holiday lights, uh, we, uh, have a hundred and eighty-seven cubic yards of, uh, um, holiday lights that we, uh, recycled last year, and that's up about forty-seven cubic yards from, uh, previous year. Um, the holiday lights, uh, again, we collect those at the household house waste facility, and we also collect it at the electronics, uh, facility, and Ace Hardware also has been a very, very good partner for us as well. Tires, tires are always a problem, uh, you can only use them, uh, so many, uh, for swings and, and things like that. Uh, we try really hard, uh, and actually, this is, uh, based on your guys' um, commitment, uh, try and keep them out of the ditch, and essentially what we do is we, we charge only what it costs us to, to get rid of them. Uh, so it's, it's been a pretty, uh, good program, and it's been pretty successful. Uh, the same thing goes for appliances, uh, you know, we're down about thirty appliances from what we got previously, but, uh, again, it's a significant amount, uh, number of, uh, appliances that we received. Uh, the electronics, um, is, uh, basically, uh, down from, uh, last year, which I was a little surprised about, it's only about a hundred and two tons of electronics. Uh, again, we collect the electronics out at the landfill, and we also collect them at the, uh, the, uh, electronics facility out on, uh, Fifteenth Avenue, uh, which is open, um, Tuesdays from four until six. Uh, we also had, uh, collections, uh, as we talked about in Barnesville and Holly last year, uh, those were for electronics and also household house waste. Uh, we had one, as we, uh, mentioned, in Holly and one in Barnesville, we also had one in, um, uh, Morehead during the cleanup, so, very well received and, uh, very, very positive, uh, results from what we got. Uh, as we move forward, and this, this is not gonna be anything that you haven't heard before, uh, the concerns that I, uh, I have, uh, or that we should be aware of as we move forward, uh, it's a demo site, um, the, uh, pollution control agency, uh, is probably gonna require demolition, uh, landfills to have liners, and, uh, if that happens, I'm not sure what that will have, uh, what, uh, impact that will have on the existing, uh, demolition landfill that's privately owned. Uh, to, uh, put a liner in is gonna be a significant cost, and, uh, so it's, it's something that we have to pay attention to to figure out what we wanna do. Uh, the other concern, and you've heard me, uh, talk about this a million times, because this one really scares me, uh, PFAS, and it's, I'm gonna mispronounce this, they, they asked me about this last time, it's per-fluor alcohol, is what it is. And essentially what it is, is it's in, uh, it's everywhere, it's virtually everywhere, but it's in, uh, mostly three M products. Uh, as we talked about, uh, three M settled with the state for three hundred, or, for eight hundred million dollars, uh, several, uh, years ago, but they estimate their cleanup is gonna be at one site is gonna be one point three billion dollars. So, it's gonna be a significant impact. I think where we're gonna have the issue is in our leachate, uh, because what happens is that the, uh, material, uh, goes into the leachate, and then, uh, our leachate goes to the wastewater facility in, uh, Fargo to be treated, and, uh, there's just no way to treat this stuff right now, so it's a, it's a real significant concern. Uh, future concerns or future issues that are, uh, on the horizon that I see, uh, obviously the bonding bill is first and foremost, uh, something that we've taken a run at several years, I think this is gonna be the year, although Commissioner Wayne always laughs at me 'cause I'm the eternal optimist, uh, which I am, but I think this'll be the year that we'll, uh, get the funding for that. Uh, the other thing is, I'll be back, uh, next week, uh, we, uh, we put out bids, uh, for the landfill expansion, the cell expansion. Uh, we anticipate, uh, we had a pre-construction meeting last week, we had, uh, uh, four contractors in there, so I think we're gonna get some good bids, and hopefully they'll be competitive. Uh, and then the final thing is, again, this is assuming, uh, we're gonna get, uh, funding for the, um, Resource Recovery Campus, uh, the bids for the, uh, Resource Recovery Campus. I'm, uh, concerned, obviously, about what those will be as well. So with that, I will stand to answer any questions. Uh, again, I thank you for, uh, your guys' interest and commitment. Um, I think, uh, you, you have a very good solid waste pro, uh, program, and I think you should be proud because I think you've, uh, made quite a commitment, uh, and, and provide a great deal of interest to make this thing work. So with that, I'll stand to answer any questions being asked.
Just a question on the aerosols. How, what is an aerosol, what do you, how do you measure five thousand?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, essentially what they are, they're like, uh, paint cans and, uh, any kind of, yeah, and so they're, each one of those are individually common.
Okay.
That's, Julie does that, I don't do that, Julie does that.
Another question I had, uh, now, we, we haul almost seventy-one tons to Perum, and we brought back seventy-eight tons. Well, now, that's fines we bring back, so...
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I think the, uh, the, uh, there's, there's two issues as it relates to that. Number one, I think the normal wa, uh, number one issue is, is that, um, we haven't been able to take as much material over for a couple of reasons, and I think the first reason is, is that, um, our transfer station just can't, uh, get the good quality material that they take over there. Um, the material that we take back, uh, the first six thousand tons, uh, is, is, uh, there's no charge, and, uh, we have no charge for the first six thousand tons of material that we take over to, uh, to Perum. Um, the, uh, the advantage of having the fines is, is that we can use the fines as alternative daily cover, uh, and it doesn't really take up significant landfill space, whereas the, uh, the, uh, seven thousand tons for the, uh, the garbage would take a significant amount...
So it's just a smaller...
Right.
How does the sawdust thing work?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, essentially what they do with the sawdust, they bring it over in, uh, roll-off containers from, uh, New York mills, and, uh, they just dump it, and then, um, we use it as alternative daily cover, so they mix it with, uh, petroleum, uh, contaminated soil or, or the fines or whatever they're using, uh, for alternative daily cover, and then they spread it over the top. Uh, every day, we have to, uh, cover the material, make sure that the, keep the birds away as much as possible, and the vermin away as much as possible. So that's the way that's works.
Interesting. Very good.
And do they pay us to take it?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner, yes, they pay us, uh, significant amount, uh, but it's cheaper than, uh, when you, what other, uh, what they have.
Right, and you said, mentioned earlier that it helps with the odor as well?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, uh, Commissioner, yes, that's, that's the case. Now, there has been, uh, uh, again, and this is, uh, something that, uh, we've talked about before as well, uh, we have had some odor issues out there, uh, recently, and I, I'm not exactly sure exactly what's causing it, um, but I think one of the things that, uh, with this new, uh, landfill cell expansion, we're putting in thirteen additional, uh, gas wells to be able to mitigate that, so I think that that would go a long ways to help alleviate any odors, but certainly the sawdust helps, uh, to minimize the odor.
Is that because of the pine resin that's present in the sawdust?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner, I think that's, that's a big part of it, yeah, I think it's just the, uh, just the odor of the wood, it's, uh, it's a, it's a more of a refreshing odor, uh, rather than garbage.
All right.
Any other questions?
Interesting.
Mr.? Yeah, just going to, uh, follow up a little bit on your questioning, the, uh, the one thing on the volumes, you notice there, the, you know, we're talking in terms of tons of daily cover and tons of waste disposed, and those two numbers just so happened to fall fairly close in line with the fifty-four thousand cubic yards of landfill, um, airspace that was used. Uh, you know, if you were to, and I'm trying to get to what Perum does for us, so if you were to take that three million one thirty-three and you divide that out by the fifty-four cubic, um, airspace used this year, it actually calculates out to be about fifty-seven years of life left, using his numbers here, and, and assuming that the, that, that the compaction rate...
Stays the same.
Stays the same. If we would've, if we would add back in that seven, uh, seven thousand, uh, tons that goes to Perum, that lifespan would drop down to fifty, from fifty-seven to fifty, so you can, just that alone, you can see there, you know, and I, I think this land, landfill expansion that we're doing right now, it's about two point five million dollar project, projected cost, and that will be good for, I've been told, ten years.
Eight to ten years.
Eight to ten years, so, so you can almost see that that eight, that, what we're sending to Perum, basically, you know, you can equate that out to about a two point five million dollar savings, you know, on life of, of the landfill, so...
I was just looking at, you know, you look at the tons that we bring back, look that we're bringing back more than we're taking there, you know, but I realize it's in a different form, so it's, uh...
Well, and, and quite frankly, and this is something that I keep talking about, is we're, we're under-delivering.
Right.
You know, so as soon as we get that transportation going, we need to get that up to where it's supposed to be, but...
I think it's eighty-four hundred tons, though.
Right. Mr. Chairman, Commissioner, I mean, one of the things, I think, with that new transfer station, we're, we're absolutely gonna be able to do, uh, much better than we are.
Yeah, no, no, one thing to keep in mind now, the, that's eighty-four hundred right now is our commitment. Um, as I reported last week, last time we had our Prairie Lakes meeting, if we were to continue operating like we did the month of January, in terms of processed tonnage, we'd be upwards of about sixty-one thousand. So, once you get up to sixty-one thousand, then our, if that becomes the new norm, then our deliverable number will go from eighty-four hundred to something higher, that is gonna be required of us to, to pay for whether we deliver it or not. So that's, the important part here is, as we grow, you know, uh, we're gonna have to, we're gonna have to make sure that we send all this stuff to Perum, so...
Uh, one other thing I was just gonna mention, and I, uh, it's also included in, uh, information you had, um, my, uh, landfill staff is, uh, really hurting right now. I have, uh, one person that's been in the hospital for, uh, over a week, almost two weeks, and, uh, you know, he's in a rehab facility for probably ten days or so. And then, uh, I have another person who, uh, is gonna have back surgery the sixteenth of, uh, March, so I need to be, uh, taking a look at what, uh, I wanna be doing on that. I've, uh, laid out some options to, to Grant and Kevin, and, uh, I'm trying to pursue, uh, um, them a little bit more, uh, to come up with, uh, what we need to have, um, but I just wanted to give you all an update on what was happening on that. So with that, if you, there's no other questions? Well, thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Good work, Kirk Keon, your staff, pass that along to them, we appreciate what you guys do out there, so...
Very good.
Yeah, and I, I, and I think we're gonna be reporting too on our, on our trip to, during our committee reports, and, uh, thank you for, uh, kinda, uh, getting some of those, uh, like the governor's office, that meeting lined up, that was, that was worthwhile for all of us, so...
Thank you for working on that.
Thank you. Thank you very good.
Thank you.
Send our best wishes to you, Stan.
Yeah, thank you. Next annual report we got is from planning and zoning, Matt Jacobson.
Well, good morning, Commissioners, Mr. Chair. Um, just wanna give an update on the planning and zoning department, you, as you know, we've, uh, there's been a lot of transition and change in, in two thousand nineteen, um, with our administrative assistant, she joined the department in late two thousand eighteen, um, having the, the newly created planning technician position filled in early two thousand nineteen, and then me coming on board in, in the spring of, of two thousand nineteen. Um, so, you know, in, in two thousand nineteen, I just wanna give you kind of a, a look at some of the, the permitting that we've done. Um, first thing that I'll highlight is that in two thousand nineteen, we did two hundred and seventy-eight building permit inspections, so, and a hu, out of those, a hundred and fifty were for building permits that were issued between two thousand fifteen and two thousand seventeen, and I just wanna, um, underscore the importance of that planning technician position, we could not have done, um, those inspections without, um, an order and, um, going out and getting around the county and taking a look at them, so, I really appreciate you all in, in, in creating that position and filling that need there for the department, so...
So, did we find any deficiencies going out there?
Not many, no, no. Most were built, uh, according to what was stated in their applications, okay? So...
Hey, uh, Mr. Chairman, I, I like your recap of your two thousand nineteen numbers here. Uh, I think it'd be worthwhile to build on that database and to start doing comparative ones for each of those categories year after year.
Sure.
And, and then, in future reports, bring those back, so, it also gives us an idea on, on where we're growing, how we're growing, uh, and that type of thing...
Sure.
...that can probably have an impact on decisions we make and other things, so...
Yeah.
It's good, and I think if you can expand on that to help create a history.
Well, I think it's important to note as well, I asked Matt that several months ago, how are the, the conditional permits and requests for the planning commission, how have they in two thousand nineteen compared to two thousand eighteen and two thousand seventeen? So you've captured that data.
Yes.
So that's available, so if you wanna forward that to Steve as well to give to us, because you're, you're right, it's important to know where the growth pockets may be or the trends so that we can determine as well here.
And I think we could probably do a, make a three to five year look back on, on building permits too, if we do have that, that information. Um, and just to touch on the, the conditional use permits and the interim use permits, um, I wanna say that they're, for two thousand nineteen, they're, compared to the last five years, they're definitely not low. They're not the highest they've been, but they're not, they're not low.
One of the, one of the interesting, it's, it's one thing to, uh, to, to get a whole picture on something, to, to, to see the number of conditional use permits, for example, that were granted, but how does that compare to how many that were applied for?
Sure.
You know, that, that can, you know, sometimes that can raise some questions too, so...
Yeah, yeah.
But those types of things can...
I would probably say, and I can say this with confidence, that probably ninety-nine percent of them are approved.
Are approved, yeah, and I would agree with that.
That's in two to three annually possibly are denied.
Because by the...
And usually come back in some different type of plan or...
By the time that, that usually some of those things resolve through conditions.
Yeah.
Yep, exactly.
Yeah.
Yep, yep. Um, one of, one of the big things I wanna note is that, that we did have twenty variance applications, nineteen of those were approved. Um, a lot of those variance requests are for our, um, density standards and, um, set back from the ordinary high water level of, of lakes, so those are probably the two, the two biggest ones, so, um, there'll be requests for, say, a third dwelling in a quarter quarter, um, that's a big one, also, the other big one is with the shoreland, and, um, our set back for most of our lakes is two... And our setback from most of our lakes is two hundred feet. A lot of the requests are to be just a little closer. Not, not like crazy, crazy close, but some are between that hundred and fifty, hundred and seventy-five foot range. So just a little bit closer. And that's just because we have a lot of non-conforming lots.
That's to make whatever they want to fit on the property.
Yep, yep, exactly, exactly. Another big one is single lot subdivisions. I think this came up in twenty eighteen. Tim Magnuson had highlighted that he had seen an increase in single lot subdivision applications. Those, I think, get denied a little more often than any of our other building permits just because we're trying not to make lots that don't conform to the standards of our ordinance, essentially. But there's still quite a few of those that have, that came through in twenty nineteen. And then we did have, have two petitions for rezoning that were approved as well. And so those are not very common at all. And I believe that's something that came up in twenty eighteen as well. Commissioner Campbell, I believe you had asked about the, how common that was and, and the impacts. That a rezoning can have countywide implications, so.
The ones that after the fact building permits issued, seven of them.
Yep.
Is there, are there fines involved in that, or?
That's that three times the application fee, yep. So it would be seventy-five dollars and then three dollars per thousand dollar value of whatever was built. Any other questions on permitting at all? So one request that I have been hearing in late, mid to late twenty nineteen is a need to take a look at the land development code, make some updates and tweaks to that. And right now, since December, we, the Planning Commission has formed a subcommittee that consists of members from the Board of Commissioners, the Board of Adjustment, and the Planning Commission. And they've been meeting monthly since December. Currently, the last meeting was last week. They've worked through six of the eight chapters in the code. And the hope is to bring recommended, recommended updates to the Planning Commission by April of this year. In talking with our county attorney, it seems like it would be a good idea to have at least one, possibly two, public hearings or public meetings at the Planning Commission level to incorporate comments that we receive from other public as well as other state and local entities before bringing that to, to the Board of Commissioners, to you, where there would have to be another public meeting as well. So that's moving on. One other thing, and I have to commend Rita Rooker on this, is we've been compiling basically all the information on our, on the active gravel pits in the county. There are quite a few. And so what we're looking to do is just get all of our, right now, all that information exists in separate folders in a filing cabinet. And the goal is to get all that information in one spot so we can easily respond to citizen complaints. We can better track permitting and better coordinate inspections of gravel pits. I don't think that's something that's been done too often. Really, the goal is to, with that, is to better manage our interuse gravel mining permits to reduce, hopefully reduce the number of complaints that we get. And then just to strengthen our relationships that we have with our operators in the county.
Who tracks the gravel that goes out of the pits?
Who tracks the gravel that goes out of, that's, I, my understanding is that is done through, through a quarterly gravel tax. And so they, every, every quarter, if there is an active pit, they would submit basically their, their gravel tax that has the amount that's coming out of that pit and where it's, where it's coming from or where it's going. And that's handled and not at the auditor's office.
Every, every truck is ticketed, I believe.
Yep.
Yes.
Yep.
Great, they're all tracked.
Yep.
Are they scaled also?
Yep.
At the pit, or?
Not necessarily at the pit, but...
Well, they have scales in the buckets, so they know what they're putting into the trucks.
Oh, okay.
But, you know, it's a business, and they just charge it to wherever it's going.
Okay.
Yep.
So that's where we get the gravel tax from?
Yep. Yep.
Well, the companies report their total quarterly.
Yep.
And the pit outbreakers have to pay the tax?
No, the company pays the tax.
Yeah, the company that's hauling the gravel.
Yep, the haulers, yep.
Okay.
And then the final thing in twenty nineteen, and I can take zero credit for this. This was all Emma Noterman, our planning technician. So you're probably aware that we had, Clay County was going through the process of being designated by an organization called Solsmart, which is basically an organization comprised of the International City and County Management Association, the Solar Foundation, and other national and state and local partners to promote the development of solar energy at the local government scale. So when we initially started that process, we were shooting, they have three kind of tiers. They have a gold, silver, and bronze designation. And you have to do certain things to meet each of those designations. And the whole point is to make your, the community more solar friendly or recognize it for its, for its actions to be a more solar friendly community. And so we started out shooting for the bronze level designation. But because of the good work of Emma, we ended up getting silver. So we are now a Solsmart silver designated county. And so that's something that will be, I guess, nationally recognized for, through the Solsmart Foundation. So we just got to figure out what it is.
That doesn't come with a big check or anything, does it?
Unfortunately not. Just this signed plaque thing.
Steve, you need some hanging up.
Some more wall art for you.
Well, I think it is important to note it is beneficial. We've, we've benefited from wind tax for a while, and now we, how many acres in Clay County do we have in these solar farms?
I would say we've got five right now, not acres, but sites.
Right.
They're, they range from seven to ten acres.
Correct.
And then one more coming on probably this year.
Isn't there a couple of them on Highway Nine going up?
Yep, yep.
Do the, do the, do the things that Morehead has done, do they include, or is that included? Like the solar panels and stuff that we invest in, that's within the city limits, is that part of it too?
I, I'm not sure if that was mentioned. I think that may have been mentioned in part of the application.
Yeah, I think that is, that is part of it. What's been going on outside of Morehead and then other communities like Barnesville is that the community solar garden program, which is an XL energy program. And so that those, those so, community solar gardens would be, would tie into the XL.
But I think it plays off of it because of our investment in Morehead's solar park. Stepped us to have more conversations about what ordinances do we have in place that are limiting this availability for rural Clay County. And so we went through the process and it's kind of a cool plaque.
Yeah. And I will add that it also kind of includes some of the more personal solar use, so use solar use as an accessory use. And we've seen a little bit more of that as well in the county. People put up solar panels for their, their own personal energy consumption. So that's been happening too. We only have one more thing, I think, that we can do to actually get the gold designation. But we decided to take the silver now and then work towards that in the future, so. And that kind of ties into, to work in twenty twenty. One thing that our department is doing, along with the Information Services Department, is working on a online building permit application. And actually, if this is complete, then we can check that box out to get our gold designation for Solsmart. So it's something that, you know, is, online building permit applications are commonplace in most, many counties in the state. And this just happened to work out with Information Services where we could get a kind of a cost-effective application built. So we're looking for that to come out in, in like spring, early summer. The Buffalo River flood insurance study, which you've heard of for probably a few years now, is nearing the end. It's close to being completed. I've seen the draft maps. Hasn't quite been finalized by FEMA yet, so I will likely be back before you in the near future along with Greg Thompson from Houston Engineering to give you an update on that and that process moving forward and getting that, those maps finalized. One other thing that, that staff has been doing, and this was mentioned, I believe, in Tim's update in twenty eighteen, was looking at the, the planning and zoning fee schedule. At the, at the time, you all had kind of seemed open to him looking into that a little bit more. And we've put together a lot of information with regards to comparing our fee schedule to other counties. And also looking at specifically estimating the average costs of a Board of Adjustment hearing and a Planning Commission meeting relative to the cost of our conditional use and or use permit application, bareman's application. So hoping in mid to late twenty twenty, coming back to you and giving you a report on that. The other, the last thing is just to keep going with the land development ordinance update and continuing what we've been doing in twenty nineteen. So with that, I'll open it up to any questions you might have for me.
Just had a question on the online building permit, not understanding how it really goes.
Sure.
It doesn't get approved anyway, if you fly online or if you come in downstairs and apply for permit, does it get approved right away, or?
No, it wouldn't get approved right away. We would have to, to still review the permit. And one thing that I want to do more of, this would be kind of a little bit of a change from our normal workflow in reviewing and approving building permits is to actually, since we have that planning technician position now, is actually going out and looking at the site before approving a building permit. I think that'll save a lot of headaches.
Yeah, well, that's one, what do you do online? Do you get a notification then that it's approved?
Yep, yep, yep. And one, one thing that'll be nice for, for, for the residents of the county who are looking to build things is I think it'll make our, the provisions and standards that we have in place in our ordinance more clear. They'll actually be able to go on a map, draw out where their structure will be. It would, it will tell them if they're too close to a setback. It'll provide them with all the information on, say you're in a shoreline district, you need to be this far away from your property lines, you need to be this far away from the lake. It'll actually let them know if they're in those setbacks or close to those setbacks. So I think it'll be more beneficial to the residents of our, of our county. And the paper option will always be available as well.
Jenny?
Thank you. Well, we did have a lot of turnover. I think that's, that's fair to say. And I think your department has really met the challenge of that, but you've also listened to the concerns that this board had with issues in the past. And, and one of that was really helping meet landowners where it is most convenient. And sometimes people work hours that don't allow them to get to the courthouse during normal business hours. So I think to have the availability to initially submit that online will really be important. And you're right, it will save a ton of headaches if we can get out and literally see where the permit requested may be. So I appreciate that. The one question I did have is, I know in the past, we'd been working on scanning prior years, paper copies to just make sure we have that electronically. Is that something that you're still trying to do?
Yes. Rita has been working on that right now and getting things into our application extender system. So that's, that's, that's been ongoing, yep.
I just, Matt, I want to compliment you and your staff for what you've accomplished in two thousand nineteen. As a commissioner that's been around for a while, there's three areas that I think each of us commissioners have a tendency to hear more complaints about than others. One has to do with our roads, another one has to do with some social service issues, and the third one is the planning and zoning issues. And, you know, I think I have not received one call in two thousand nineteen regarding planning and zoning issues of concern. So that, that says something, but things must be going good. Oftentimes, you can indicate where there are some issues is based on the complaints that we can get. And I haven't, I haven't received any, so that's off to you and your group for what you're doing.
Good to hear, thank you. Can't promise anything for twenty twenty. Do your best, do your best.
Right, yeah. But it's, you know, I think, you know, and I, you know, one of the things that, that I've noticed too is, is we're not leaving things in limbo in the planning and zoning department. You know, like may have been done to some degree in the past. We always seem to have something that, that would come back and say, well, this was never finished or something. And let's not let that happen that we...
Yeah, 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 absolutely. It's good to take care of things as quickly as possible, so. Thank you.
Thank you for the update, Matt. Good work. Dave, you got a few items you want to go over here. We got an amendment to the five-year road construction plan.
Exciting week for your son.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Congratulations to his team.
Right, he just got done with the Squirt International, threw it to the little guy. So he'll be moving up the PV, so I was kind of...
So before we get started, I, I do want to say we, we have to schedule a meeting with you for about five o'clock Thursday afternoon here.
Drives real fast.
You can call in on that one.
Yeah, I do have two items here. The first item is just bringing back amendment to our current five-year plan, fiscal year twenty twenty only. Talked a little bit about an MOU that we were working on with the watershed. We're still ironing out the details on that. We're real close to bringing that in, hopefully maybe even next week. But the, the current five-year plan, what I would really like to do is, is take County Road Two, the project for mill overlay on two, and switch that out with a project in County Road Eight. We're seeing a big influx in maintenance costs as well as the roadway is just, it just deteriorating. It's getting to the end of its life, and it's really starting to show up. And we had a lot of issues where the road would blow outside of this table. Our staff would have to go out there, and sometimes it wasn't very convenient hours, take the chunks of asphalt off the road, and then, you know, the asphalt plants are open at this time usually, and we'd have to get something in there. We're looking at doing a full-depth reclamation project with an asphalt overlay. Would easily give us the, the same, similar type of years that we've had in this. The traffic's not real heavy out there, but there's a lot of heavy traffic. It is on a Ritter Bridge crossing, so we got traffic that goes across into North Dakota back and forth as well as it's kind of a straight shot into either Fargo-Morehead, Saban, or Barnesville. It's kind of in that same area, but... Our current plan, based on the allotments that came in in twenty twenty, was a little short on incoming dollars. And what I mean is we got more dollars than we planned for, and we kind of know that going in there. Our state aid allotment has been very conservative because of the auto parts, the tax money on auto parts. And we haven't really, being that that's still a little bit in limbo, we haven't really jumped our allotment up. But we are about seven hundred and seventy thousand dollars higher in revenues than we had planned in our, for this year, as well as we didn't go quite in the hole as much with last year's project. So that was about another six... So that was about another $640,000. So the FY 2020 is about 1.4 million ahead of what it was. So I guess the reason is explaining this is it shouldn't push that County Road Two project back in any additional years. I'm hoping to put that and get that in 2021 as well. And like I said, we're working on our five-year plan and I should have that shortly. We do have a five-year plan public meeting and I'll talk about that a little bit in my next item. But we'll go through that towards the end of the month and hopefully get a five-year plan approved by the board within a month.
Thank you. I just, I want to say it's it's not a secret where I live. And so I also want to say that I've strongly advocated for all of the projects on this. And so because of where I personally live, I'll be recusing myself from this vote.
Yeah, I I from from what we've seen going on in eight, I I think it, I think it's going to become a a public safety thing if we don't act on it sooner rather than later, based on what we've seen, the deterioration of that road. So the, so Dave, you reminded me now, so the, so the two projects between two and eight, the price tag that we have for each is fairly similar?
Right. I think we had 1.35 million set aside for County Road Two. And my guys don't have the project completely designed yet, so we're kind of working on it. And it's closer to the 1.75 range. That's what I have.
For eight?
Correct, yep.
So so by upping this one, had our, had we not had the excess dollars, we'd be looking at a shortfall of about $400,000.
Correct, yep.
But but because of our increased state allotment and underutilizing our dollars and...
Right, from lashes.
From lashes, okay.
And hopefully we get good bids. There's an, I don't think there's a, I think we're pretty close on our numbers here for this year's construction bids. So I don't see, you know, some years we come in quite a bit under, but I think we're going to be pretty close.
The one question I asked before, and that's that's important to me, and I speak from experience from what is now our Highway 13, I think.
Right.
Back when that was done, you know, that was originally going to be a mill and overlay to the tune of a quarter of a million to half a million dollars. And by the time they did sorrow boring, so the entire road needed to be redone and it ended up being two and a half to $3 million. So the, anytime that we push something off, you know, you have to have the concern, are you pushing something else off that is going to come back and bite you? And I'm talking about that that project on two, which is now 1.2 million, does that, you know, what's the likelihood of that turning out to be a two and a half million dollar project by waiting?
Yeah, I don't think we have to worry about that.
Okay.
It's not, it's not near to that condition yet.
If it were to get pushed back five years or something like that, it'd be a concern to have. But I think we'll be fine a year.
And I I just want to follow up one last, one last comment. I I do think our board should have the dialogue about these road infrastructures and going back and looking at what we did a few years ago into increasing them being done and and doing it through a bonding process again. It's pretty hard to beat 1% money, you know, especially when the cost of waiting to do these construction projects can be, you know, anywhere from 3% on up per year. So I I just think, I just think we should really look strongly at that that process again. Last time it proved to save us the next, you know, I think you said about 1.5 million dollars. It saved our county and we should be doing that again. With that out.
Do I need a motion on the amendment to the five-year plan?
Yeah, I I would, I would move that we alter the five-year plan to include the reconstruction work of County Highway Eight in the year 2020 and to move Highway Two to a future time in the five-year plan.
Second. Okay, we have motion and a second. And I do respect you concluding yourself on this vote, but no matter what we vote on, it's in somebody's district, you know.
Right.
You know, so whatever, okay. Any further discussion on this? All in favor?
Hi.
I'm host. Okay, we got four approves and one abstaining. Okay, the next thing you got is the annual road bridge update.
Right. I've got seven or eight items I'll try to touch on. And if there's anything that I miss, feel free to bring that up. First thing I want to, you know, and it's something that we talked about already, but the 2020 maintenance contract. I feel that that process that we, that Ann goes through, it's a tremendous amount of work, but she does a very, very good job on it. And then when we have our meeting with the townships, it's very well attended. I'd say we get three fours or better, wouldn't you say, Frank? It's in in good conversation and it's just a really good time to, you know, if there's things that come up. I know you and I stayed later and we talked with a lot of the folks and they don't rush out the door. They actually stick around, which is nice. The 2019 rate came in just a little bit higher. It's $19 per mile. I think that rolling five-year average really helps keeping things consistent. We didn't have any real change in miles or the work we do. We are going to continue to work with our operators. We've got some new operators, good operators. We just, Kim needs to get, have the ability to spend a little more time with them and that's going to be our plan. So this summer, hopefully, we can do that, give him time to work with the, with some of the new operators, making sure the townships are satisfied, the residents are satisfied. We're going to continue to put more gravel on our roadways. We're really starting, starting to show up. Like I said, I think in the past, we've inadvertently cut back a little bit on gravel and it's really starting to show. This past fall, there was some major issues and hopefully we can get that corrected up by adding more gravel. Next thing I want to touch on, just, I think we're all aware, we have an upcoming potential spring flood. I've been working with our staff. We've got some new staff again. You know, Kim and I went through this in '09 and '10. We got new shop staff. We got new engineering staff. But we've also got some of the existing staff that was there. So everybody's going to have a role to do. We've been working with Gabe with Sheriff's Department. So far, the outlook's been looking really good. Let's have to see what the next month brings.
Did you get that new survey equipment in yet?
Yep, yep. We got all the new GPS equipment. We should be ready to go on that. If any landowners, as it gets close to the river where the models are good, if they need any elevations, we can very quickly run out and let them know where where they are. The further west or east do you get outside of the model area, there's, they don't really have models for that. But if it's anything up up north in Oakport Township or down south, we should be able to do that, so. Just got the word yesterday that spring road restrictions in the south half of the state are coming on Friday. Does not include Clay County. Our county's unique. It's split right in the half. I think it's central and north central. Last year, they came on March 19th in 2018, came on March 16th and March 21st. So a couple of weeks away from restrictions or maybe even closer than that. I think we all know we didn't have a lot of frost in the ground and it's coming quick, so. As I kind of mentioned, we're currently working on our five-year construction plan. This will be discussed at Highway Tracking Committee and then we'll hold a public input meeting. There again, we get pretty good input on that. And I've already gotten a couple of things from a few different people, but luckily we've already got plans on there. I did hear from a township official on County Road Six, which is in the southeast part of the county, and that's on our plan. So it's nice to know that they are keeping an eye on things, so. We're going to continue to look at ways to get the most bang for our buck on our projects. There's tools available. We have, we, this past fall, we did go down and look at some Wilken County roads. We met with their officials on some recycling roads that they did. We also meet with Cass County, North Dakota, once a year, and we talk a little about projects. We talk about shop duties, equipment, how we handle different things and just trying to learn from each other. If, you know, they're, they're a big department like we are. They have a lot of roads, a lot of similar issues. So we're going to just continue to, you know, if there's efficiencies, if there's partnerships that we can do, I guess we're going to keep trying to do stuff like that, so. Upcoming 2020 construction, we do have a really big year coming up. First and foremost, we're going to try to finish our Glendon project on Park Avenue. So as soon as road restrictions come off, we got about, oh, I don't know if it's five or six blocks on the very south side of town. Everything from the school north through the tracks up to Highway 10 is done, which is a little bit more time consuming and more restraining. So we just got the south part where the residents are, so we got to get those guys buttoned up so they're not in a dust bowl the rest of the summer, so. Should go rather quickly. I would hope by first, second week in June, we got that one wrapped up. We do have 12 bridge replacements with concrete box culverts coming up this summer, which is a lot. I think we had six of them that are federal aid. We're going to package three of them with our, with our staff and then we're partnering with the watershed on three more, so it's kind of nice to get a lot of those in there. We have a two-mile grading project planned on County Road One in Oakport Township. We're waiting for right-of-way on that one. As soon as that gets done, we'll get that one buttoned up and get it to bid. We have a two-and-a-half-mile overlay on County Road 14. That's got some federal aid money for the shoulder paving part. And I just got word that the Fed review is done and we can get that one probably next week to add. In fact, I think it's already on the agenda that I put together. We have a six-and-a-half-mile mill and overlay on County Road 33 north of Holly. That one has been drawing a lot of interest from the locals up there, so I know they'll be very happy to have that done. And then we've got our design currently going on County Road Eight, four-and-a-half miles of a full-depth reclamation. And then I believe it's about six inches new asphalt coming on top, so that's kind of the, how that project ended up being more like 1.7. It is quite a bit of asphalt, but we got to have a tenth in design as well, too. We can't under-design something like that. Our newest state aid allotments are up, and if this stays consistent, it's going to continue to help our program. Talk a little bit about staffing. It's going to be probably one of our biggest challenges. And I think we talked county-wide, it's a big challenge. We are to a point where we went through some waves with retirements and then it was pretty good for a while. I think the next two or three years, we're going to see a lot more retirements. Again, like I said, we're not brand new to this, but a lot of experience going out the door. It's a lot of these operators that just take care of things. They know where the bad parts of their district are. And it's going to be sad to see them go, but we need to, we need to backfill and train as properly as we can so we can grab that knowledge. Hopefully, some of those guys are available. Last year, we had our 30-plus-year bridge inspector retire and he was able to come back, help us complete our bridge inspections, which we'll need him to do, as well as he was our right-of-way guy. But I mean, just in general, these guys have a lot of knowledge and it's, hopefully, we can get most of that back over time before they're completely done. We've also got two maintenance staff out with medical issues, one of them for an extended period, maybe six weeks or more. It'd be nice to get those guys back. It's kind of a, luckily, it's, the timing isn't really crucial right now. But nonetheless, we need everybody on deck. The other thing is staffing and succession. I guess we talked about that a lot with our management group. And I'm really starting to buy into that and trying to figure out ways to to work on that succession planning. So I know it's, it's a little tricky, you know, you don't exactly know. People don't always give you dates on when they're going to be gone and that sort of thing. But anyway, it's something I've been thinking about and trying to figure out with our department, so. Other than that, we're just continuing to find ways to be more efficient within our department, spend our dollars as wisely as we can, do projects and, you know, handle shop, different shop things as more efficiently as we can, you know, work with other departments. We did a really nice project with the landfill a couple of years ago. We had a shared building and things like that worked out pretty good. You know, we share on operating costs. We share on the cost of the land that we would have had to buy and to put the shop in there and just continue to do efficient work as much as we can.
Okay, any good report there, any questions for Dave? I believe you have Highway Tracking coming up here.
Well, both buds, and I can't imagine the anxiety that your parents are going to be having come Thursday night.
I did reach out to Representative Markort, so I might be bringing some young ladies through there. I'm not sure I didn't go through there and it was, it's fun just to see where they were. And I thought if my daughter's there with some of her friends, it'd be really neat to...
It's really close.
Oh, sure.
Yeah, that works out.
Thank you so much, Dave. So that will go to Soil and Water Conservation District, Daniel Lottig, Kevin Kessington. Welcome back.
Good morning, everybody.
Good morning, Kevin.
Matt came in with a bill for that sign he was supposed to pay.
That would come out of SWCD.
You didn't bring it, Jack, huh?
I did not. No, I was looking for it.
No, thank you.
Thank you very much for inviting me to attend this morning to update you on work things around the SWCD. 2020, we've applied for some grant applications and three of them have been approved. We've got the, in 2012, you transferred the county aid inspector position to us. And Minnesota Department of Agriculture had some opportunities last year for a couple of different options to apply for grants. We applied for an individual county one, which we received for $5,000 to focus on poison hemlock. And it's something that a plant was found in Highland Grove Township last fall. I'm not sure if you saw the article in the paper here a short time ago, but that's something the MDA picked up on and that, you know, was alerted to, you know, everybody, I think, that read the article, that there is a poisonous plant in the county that we're trying to get a hold of and not eradicated, basically. So that's one of the focuses on, on that weed grant that we applied for. Also, we will be educating township officials, alerting them to, you know, what to be on the lookout for. We have done this the last couple of years to have some meetings out in the field after hours. And that's been pretty well receptive. And then last year, we also had a training session for the county road greater operators. Basically, they're on all the county roads and if they can give us a little heads up that there's a potential problem site out there, we'd like to get on top of that. So that was a grant that we received for this coming year. We also applied for a, the first time ever, the joint county ones. We've been partnering with the couple surrounding counties, Becker County, Menoman County. I want to say Hubbard's in there and one other one, too, I believe, maybe Menoman County or Norman County. Anyway, that one is is focusing, that's a two-year grant, and we'll be focusing on some of the noxious weeds that are are kind of getting a foothold in the county. Leafy Spruce is one that's been around for a long time and that one, I think, is, you know, we're doing our best to keep on top of that. But spotted knappweed, wild parsnip is one that is is getting, we're seeing it move in from the east and I'm not going to point any fingers, but we're seeing it come in across the county line. And then also, common tansey is another one that is is on the noxious weed. So those are things that this grant will focus on, but we'll work in partnership with the other counties to, you know, educate and basically try to get some additional spraying funds to control these problematic weeds. We also applied in conjunction with the Buffalo River Washout District and Matt helped us submit an application to the Board of Water and Soil Resources for a grant for a Buffalo River grade stabilization project. We found out at the end of January that we, what we applied for, we got approved. So we're going to be focusing on about 30 different sites that along the main branch of the Buffalo River that are presently having washouts and we're hoping to repair those with some type of a side water in it. Basically, it's a culvert that would patch in a, an eroded site that goes into the river, put a little dico over the top of it, but basically force the water to go through a pipe rather than gully through and deposit sediment in our rivers and streams. So that's one that we appreciate, working with Matt, that he's very good at this. There's a model, a PTM application model, and he was able to help us with that. And I think he had some training with Houston Engineering, so the Buffalo Red, it's just another good partnership we've got with the Buffalo Red. I probably should have Commissioner Mojo and Commissioner Gross talking this next one, the one watershed, one plans that we're presently deeply involved with and...
Oh, you don't want me to? Go ahead.
Well, I know, I think next Tuesday, Bruce Albright and myself are going to be here to give a little update on the final draft, where we're at with the Buffalo Red. So that one is coming to a close. A lot of meetings. I guess our staff has been involved with the, with the planning committee. The two of us have been on the advisory committee and one board member, or one or two, I guess, depending on who can make it out, on the policy committee as, as you guys have been. So anyway, there's a lot of things coming down the pipe here, a lot of money coming into the area. It's non-competitive grant funds that are going to be focused on those areas that have a, one watershed, one plan in place. So more on that will be coming, but like I say, Bruce and I are looking at putting on something for you folks next Tuesday. We're, like I said, the Buffalo Red, we're in the final draft stages. The wild rice one, we're a little over half on that one, so things are progressing, but lots of meetings. And I guess that's such is the nature of of our, of our jobs, I guess. Last year, you focused and transferred the Aquatic Invasive Species Program to us. Be looking for a billboard on the outskirts of Glendon coming here, probably in April, that we're going to be getting a, working with Newman Billboard Company and having a sign out there. We also have participated in some education events last fall, the Water Festival, that is River Keepers. We also, the Clay SWCD participates also, but Lynn had a booth at the Water Festival for, I think, just about 2,100 fourth graders that come through the event over a, over a five-day period. There was also a fishing derby that he was involved with and some other promotional items that will be coming down here in the near future, so. Like I said, that's a brand new one last year. And then we have a, we're in the process of creating a soil health, a cover crop program for our area landowners. This is something that's statewide of importance, but also national importance, trying to control some of our, you know, erosive soils by getting a cover over winter. And some of our crops that we have, some fall harvested crops, some of our potatoes, sugar beet land, some of those that are open to, you know, bear in the wintertime. If there's some way we can get some cover... of those that are open to bear in the wintertime. If there's some way we can get some cover on those to basically kind of restrict some of that, reduce some of that flooding, like some of that erosion that's occurring out there. But also, there is an opportunity for some landowners that have livestock to incorporate some different mixes in there, maybe some turnips, some radishes, those type of things that are, can be used as feed over winter. So those are all things that are new for 2020. We're, our continued programs, I guess...
Can I just talk on the cover crop?
Interrupt any time, guys.
No, it's fine. And I, we've been part of these discussions for a while, and I think it's also important to note that anything that you do may affect the Highway Department as well, because there are a couple instances where, because of the crops that were left in the field this year, it really cut down on the amount of drifting that we're seeing on some of these roads. So even if someone were to leave one or two rows of beans, and then the drift will happen that much farther back into the field, it's catching it before it's on the road. And so I think, you know, in looking for ways that we could find money to do that, it might be a collaboration effort, too.
And last year, we did have a collaboration with Minnesota Department of Transportation. We had a couple of meetings with landowners, and if you notice, some of the snow fences that have been put up, also landowners are working with MINDOT to leave so many rows of corn out there. And corn is, you said soybeans, you know, that's one. It doesn't take much to hold back a little bit of snow. If you notice, along the side, a little clump of grass along the road edge catches snow, and you got to drift. But to get that crop out in the field far enough way allows it to build up in the snow, the snow in the corn itself, but then it settles out before it gets to the road. So there are some strategic plans and, you know, distances that need to be looked into, but that MINDOT is working with landowners to get some of those areas that are of known problem sites to, if they're willing to plant some corn, they've got some funds that they are willing to play the landlord to retain that cover crop over winter.
And that could probably be duplicated with our Highway Tracking Group, and identify, having the Highway Department either identify those problem areas to recommend to you, and then you know what landowners to work with. So I think it could work.
Well, I know MINDOT came to us last year to want to know if we could, you know, give them some names, landowner. They knew some sites, but don't know the landowners. So we put together a couple of meetings, met with them, and like I say, throughout the county, you'll notice there's some spots around the area.
I think any time we can especially take a look at our county emergency road issues and school routes and stuff, I think would be a good place to start.
Tree program, I guess that would be another one, another option for snow fans type of thing. Granted, there's a little more upkeep with that, but it's something that I guess I've envisioned, envisioned as long as I would, your kind of a neat corridor from, basically from DeWorth all the way to Holly would be kind of a neat on the north side of the road. But like I say, in the dream world, I guess that would be something that would be kind of neat. But that's another option for a snow fence.
Like with a bike trail?
Well, something's...
Yeah.
We will be meeting with Dave Overbow's staff and our Collin Spring vendor here shortly to set up the 2020 Spring Program. We'll be meeting at the Clay County Association of Township properties meeting on the sixteenth to basically update them on what we're doing, but also that is the meeting that we always have our workshops for the township officials and also mayors, who are by law a weed inspector for their respective entity.
Correct.
The County Field Lot Officer Program, we'll be starting making more compliance checks again, and potential wetland impacts springtime projects that just involving wetlands always seems to start, you know, in spring when people start wanting to move some dirt. So those things all come across our desk. Urban Conservation Program, your county, your Crestwood Project out there, I mean, I hope you've been keeping a little bit of tabs on that, because we definitely have, and we're hoping to see the second year here to have a little better showing out there. Granted, last year, we got it seeded, and, you know, a lot of site prep, getting that ground ready, got it planted, and it came up nice. We had a good growing season for getting something started from seed. Weeds are something that is just naturally going to be, we can't spray out there. So basically, some mowing is going to have to be done, so we'll be working with that to get that taken care of.
Bless you.
Sorry. And then also, we do have some rain barrel and compost tumbler workshops that we have planned. Morehead Community Ed has offered us a spot in their catalog, so those projects and workshops are already full for the year, which is good. Also, we've got a couple of events that we've got planned for a couple of local establishments that we'll be focusing on pollinator habitat. So those are the things that were fun last year. Our Buffalo Program, that's something that you guys have been very instrumental in getting, you know, knowing what's going on with that. As of right now, we're about 99% complete on our public waters. We're approximately 90% complete in the Wild Rice Watershed District, and if you remember, those were there with the Watershed District decided to leave the jurisdiction in the county's lap, and you guys took that over as the enforcement. So that is coming along nicely. The Buffalo Red, we're 65 to 70% in there. And what, you know, their route that they took was to go through a public hearing process. So there is a public hearing on Thursday night for a couple of ditches, and our hopes are to get those taken care of this year, but they've got some easement money that they've got for landowners. So we're urging planting this spring, and enforcement is something that's just ongoing. Crep Sign Up is a combination federal and state program that pays landowners to idle certain sensitive properties. We've got about 6,000 total acres in permanent easements in the county as of right now, and that's been going on since 1986. Our ag BMP, Low Interest Loan Program continues to be popular. We've got over 90 loans that we've loaned out, over $1.6 million to area landowners for things such as no-tail drills, ag waste systems, septic system upgrades, some new wells, those type of things all qualify, anything that basically reduces a pollution hazard. Walk-in access sign-up, ongoing sign-up is, right now presently, we're looking at having those that have acres that are enrolled in the walking and walk-in access program. Basically allows public hunting on your property. And we have about eight property owners right now for about 1,800 acres that receive a payment for allowing open public hunting. We have an electioneer upon us as well. We have three board members that will be up for election this year, so that is always an interesting time for us, I guess. And one last thing, this marks our 75th anniversary, June 21st of 1945, Clay SWCD was established. So I know we've got some anniversary celebration probably coming up sometime this year. We have nothing determined as of yet, but I know our board members want to have something. So those are things that are coming down the pike here. And no, I haven't been around since that long. And I also want to thank you guys for allowing me to be on your department team meetings. I also appreciate the county retreat that I was invited to. That was all kind of interesting fun. And also, the rural cities and county meetings. I enjoy being, I enjoy going to the little towns, the hitter dog, and Linden, I'm waiting for Avril to be on the schedule, but I'm just kidding. Anyway, any other question, guys?
I just got a question on weeds and stuff like that. You know, you spray the weeds. How far do you go? You do just do the ditch, you know, if I find weeds in my farm, I do spray?
That's your baby. On your farm, and ours is basically working with the county properties. So, you know, and we got, you got a kind of a front slope, you got the ditch bottom, and you got the back slope. If landowners have crops out there, you know, our contractor that we hire, he little area and going too far out there. So, you know, there's an area that he wants to be safe. He doesn't want potential drift into a farmer's field. So farmers' lands, that's your responsibilities. Township properties, that's their responsibilities. Cities, that's the mayor's responsibility. So our, we work with county properties. So those are things that, you know, county roads, your county, your bio properties, those are things that we work with.
That's what I felt, too, but if there's a weed in the ditch, there's more than likely a weed in the farmland also.
You know, these noxious weeds, yeah, they do spread, and that's where I think our grader operators know what they're looking for out there, giving us a heads up. Our vendor that we work with, he's very well, very knowledgeable in the roads. He's been doing it for a number of years, so knows kind of the hotspots. And also, you know, we have to use a chemical that is some broadleaf stuff. You've got to use grass-type sprays that are going to kill grass, not broadleaf stuff, because one, it's very hard to find a one that'll pick and choose out of the habitat that's out there. So certain times of the year, good times of the year to do like thistles are like the fall. If a guy can mow this, the grassland, that new flush of thistles, if you can hit that in the fall, that's a great time to get out there spraying. So it kind of starts now, you know, probably in May, when we'll see our first flush of weeds, and then it's kind of an ongoing, you know, keep on top of things. And we're out around the county a lot throughout the year, our office, so we're, I think we're watching the road ditch more than we're watching the roads sometimes, so just the way things go, so.
I was at that extension committee meeting at the head, and they described the weeds and stuff, when to spray and stuff like that.
Sure.
I mean, you got to be pretty knowledgeable on that stuff, when to spray that stuff, you know, which was a good thing they put on with the farmers, you know. But I was just wondering, I mean, if we could right of the ditch, do we notify the farmer that he has weeds in his land?
If we're out there, we would. If we see an infestation out there, most of those guys are monitoring their own fields pretty heavily, so, or they have a crop, you know, field consultant or something like that. So most of those landowners that are farming these days are on top of that stuff. I'm not saying that there's not a few that get away from it, but if we see something that is, you know, very, just getting out of hand, yeah, we would definitely call them as well. Or for sure, we would call the town, one of their town board members and work through the town board official, because ultimately, if it's not on the county land and it's on, you know, the farmland within the township, the town board official should be the one that notifies it. And we're more than willing to go out there and, you know, we're backup with them also.
Good. Okay. Any questions, further questions for you? Now, thank you so much for a very good updated report.
Thank you, Kevin.
Thank you very much.
Okay, Mark, we're going to go on the census there.
Morning. Good morning. Just wanted to give you an update to what's coming up. Okay, so census season, we've been talking about census for a long time, but census season is here. April 1st is Census Day. Starting next week, people will start getting postcards in the mail. This is the first census ever that is going to ask respondents to reply online. So starting next week, though, we got a postcard, and on a postcard will be identification code and a website. You go to the website, you enter in the code, you answer the nine questions, and you're done. A week after that, so sometime between March 16th and 24th, you'll get a reminder letter that says, please complete the census. About 10% of households in Minnesota will actually get a paper form that they'll fill out, and they'll send it back. After Census Day is passed, those households that have not responded will get a reminder postcard asking them to do it, and then a couple of weeks later, they'll get, actually get a questionnaire, a paper questionnaire sent to them. And at the end of the, toward the end of April, those houses that still haven't responded will get another notification saying, please respond. And then after that, somebody actually will come to the home and say, we need to count. Okay, so that's how it's going to play out. To make sure we get as good a count as possible, we've been actively participating in something called the Complete Count Committee, which actually City Morehead's hosting, but I represent Clay County on it, along with a lot of other organizations. And the purpose of that group is to make sure we get a good count of those populations that are traditionally hard to count. New Americans, transient people, those kind of things. The census, since it's going to be online this year, one of the things they've been asking for is for communities to put together something called Questionnaire Assistance Centers, which is a place that somebody can go and actually get assistance filling out the census questionnaire. Most cases, they're going to be in libraries all across the land. Morehead Public Library will participate, and then some, the committee has identified some other locations they thought would be target facilities. One's going to be the Yoncom Center, and one of the things they've asked was for us to host a census questionnaire assistance center in our family service center because of the population the building serves. So we looked at quite a bit at the building and how we could accomplish that and best serve the people that come there, and what we did is we came up with a partnership agreement with Lakes and Prairies. They have a reception area right on the first floor, and they have staff in there. So they've agreed to partner with us to provide this census questionnaire assistance center, which will consist of a little laptop on a little cart, and then a staff person can help them complete the question. And a census is only nine questions long, so our hope is it'll help get those people counted. We're going to work with all of our tenants in the building, you know, including our social services people, our veterans office, all those folks. And the hope is, over the next six weeks or so, that for every person they work with, they'll say, hey, have you filled out your census form? And if they haven't, we could say, you know, if you go downstairs, there's a place that will help you do that. And then we're going to have a bunch of temporary signage up that points them in the right direction. So the idea is to capture as many people as we can, especially those ones that maybe now don't have a permanent address, or maybe in-between addresses, or, you know, that kind of, those are the folks who are really trying to make sure we don't, that don't get missed. We have a little bit of cost in this. We bought a little cart and a lock for the laptop and some stuff like that to help offset that. West Central Initiative was kind enough to give us some money to help promote this effort. So I think overall, we've got a pretty good plan, and we're going to try to get as good a count as we possibly can, because census is really important.
When people, as you say, don't have a permanent address, how do you not send them a cart then? How do you know?
Well, they wouldn't have a cart, so then the question is, you know, where are you staying? You know, I'm staying on my friend's couch, or whatever that might be. Well, then that friend actually should count them, but we want to make, you know, they maybe sleep in their car, or whatever. There's a lot of things that could happen, and the census has the capability of recording that, saying, I'm staying at the 200 block of, you know, whatever. I don't know how they would answer that question, but that's the whole purpose behind the questionnaire assistance center. There's actually some, a little bit of training that helps those folks assist those people to answer the questions. We just don't want them to get forgotten, those people.
No, I can see where it's going to be very important that her book gets counted, you know, as far as getting funds into state and...
Yeah. And one of the other things we've been telling, or want to tell people is, you know, if you don't want the census person to come to your home, because there's some mistrust of government in some communities, the way to do that is by responding to the questionnaire ahead of time, then they're not going to come. So that's one of the things they say, if you answer it, then they won't come to your house.
Thank you. Thank you, Mark. Any questions for Mark?
I did relay that. I didn't know that you were working with CAP LP, so I appreciate that that is happening. But at our board meeting a week and a half ago, I had mentioned that I think that that would be a great collaboration, and you'd already thought of it.
Yes. You're welcome.
All right. It looks like the group is here for the 10th ten o'clock. We'll take them instead of doing community reports. So people are ready to go. Bring your chairs up here, and we'll...
We'll grab the chairs.
We're going to be talking about a housing support agreement regarding a 46 unit affordable housing.
Morning. We brought some handouts for you guys. Just Anna Anderson, who was with our company Commonwealth.
When I was around?
I think she met with you guys back in May of last year. She's no longer with us, but this is the group that is shepherding the project through from here on out.
Okay. Before we get started, then, we'll have two introductions here before we get going in. We know Ron.
Kelly.
Oh, hi. I'm Phyllis. Hi, I'm Paul.
Lucas Pete here from MNA Design, the architect for the development.
Dan Kreutz, City Reap Bee Development with Commonwealth.
I'm Brett Schumacher of Commonwealth Construction, general contractor.
All right. Just a minute until we get these all handed out here.
That's fine.
It wasn't supposed to be.
Okay, this, easy reach, is that?
Yes. How many different handouts are there?
There's the power point, and then there's just two site plans.
Yeah, sorry. I probably just think it's...
So this is it, huh?
Correct.
And Mr. Chair, I could give just a brief intro.
Very good. Go for it.
Okay. So just a reminder, back in May of last year, 2019, we came before the board, and Aaron was with us from Commonwealth Development at that time. But the conversation was around this affordable housing development, and the clarity in terms of the county's role was that of that larger development, we were looking at 10 units that would serve folks with disabilities, long-term homelessness. And so, as a part of that application process to Minnesota Housing Finance, the county, a part of that application is the county submits a letter of, I believe it's confirmation, which just outlines that we would be working with the development corporation to work within those 10 units that we want to serve folks with disabilities or long-term homelessness through the housing support program. So... up through the housing support program. So, that was kind of what the county's role was at that time. And so, um, I've asked them to come back and give you an update on their application. Also have with us Emma from Lakes and Prairies. Uh, if you recall, a part of the application process was to provide services to those folks living in those ten units. And under this, uh, plan, we were gonna work with Lakes and Prairies, the CAP LP, for that service part. So, that just kinda, um, catches you up to speed, uh, in terms of where we were at last May.
Appreciate that.
Yeah.
Um, so, we've got the slides here. I can, uh, walk through those quickly. It describes the update as to where the project stands today, and then obviously open up any questions you guys might have. Feel free to interject, uh, if you'd like. So, um, as you can see, project forty-six unit family building, uh, attempts to address a wide range of family sizes from individuals to four-bedroom units. Um, we also span a fairly large strata of income, uh, ranges. We're at thirty percent area median income, all the way up to sixty percent AMI. Um, this project, uh, Aaron came forward even May, we submitted an application to MHFA in June of last year. Uh, it was successful. Uh, we received a four percent allocation, uh, from MHFA, and we will also be providing a debt. We, earlier this year, uh, in January, we had a kickoff meeting with them, uh, to get the process going towards closing this project. Uh, it's a fairly lengthy process, excuse me, with MHFA. Uh, right now, we're looking at maybe October of this year to close it. Um, we started gathering, or we have started gathering pre-closing due diligence. Uh, we'll initiate our design process with the city on this trip. We have a meeting with them tomorrow morning, uh, where we'll meet with several of the city staff to begin going through, uh, the design aspects of the building. Um, tax credits, if you're not familiar, are a competitive source of funding. Uh, we compete for those. We're an affordable housing developer based in Wisconsin. We have deals in seventeen states, something we're very active in in terms of space. Uh, they are sold, uh, generally to large financial institutions, uh, or corporations that have a CRA needed, Community Reinvestment Act need in your community. Um, we've begun to solicit offers, uh, from investors for this project. Interest level has been very good. Uh, we anticipate picking an investment partner probably within the next two weeks. Um, design and construction, as they talked about, Brent and Lucas are here from Commonwealth Construction, MNA. Uh, they'll leave that. Um, as mentioned, we have that kickoff with the city tomorrow. Uh, Lucas is here to talk a little bit, if need be, about the site plan, uh, and the elevations that you have in your packet there. From a timeline perspective, uh, as I said, we're looking at October first. Uh, we're targeting getting the plans completed by mid-April. Um, it's partly to back in the MHFA's process. Uh, they have a four-month lead time from the time you get them all of the information they need in order to close, so we're targeting June. Um, so if we get the design done within, uh, that mid-April timeline, we'll take it out to bid and hopefully have our package to MHFA, uh, early part of June, mid-June. Um, as far as, uh, next steps, we've gone over them. I can certainly reiterate them, uh, but, you know, design meeting with the city tomorrow, finalize plans, get the bids are sort of the priorities, and then additional due diligence to MHFA, uh, to keep the ball rolling where they're concerned.
Okay. So, what is it that we, you're just giving us information on this? Do we, we don't act on this, anything to act on, just that?
No, it's just the information. I wanted you to, um, hear about their progress and the fact that they received the funds and, and what their next steps are. So, there isn't any action required unless there's something that you would request as a board.
Just, just looking at the address that we've got, this is in vacant land, isn't it, or?
Right.
Mr. Chair, so, so the previous action was basically that we agreed to the need of ten.
Correct.
Right? That was kinda the county's commitment to this, is that we would be supporting ten of those units. Uh, when it gets into this, um, you know, there, how do we break that down in terms of, are they one-bedroom units, uh, two, three, or four-bedroom units? Do we, are we committed to a number of each of those, or what?
Do we identify? It seems like.
I know we identify disability.
That, you know, what we thought our need would be. Um, and again, we talked about ten units through the housing support program, so it'd be folks that are eligible under that housing support program. I know we talked about wanting variety, because we did talk about wanting to be able to serve families, especially families who have housing difficulties entering into our child protection system, or folks with mental health, that kind of thing. So, uh, we did talk about a variety. I don't, I don't know if we, we may have specified the types of units. I believe it was mixed ones, twos, and threes. It was a mix.
Yeah, I, I, so there's, there's nothing that says that we committed to, um, all six of the four-bedroom or anything like that?
Any other questions here?
Thanks for keeping us on the move.
All right.
Good luck, Kevin.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, with that, we'll go to community reports. Jenny, you wanna start us off today?
Last week, I had a phone discussion with our fair board president, uh, in terms of possibly coming to this board with an update for, uh, projects that they have coming up. We also attended the AMC Legislative Conference at the Capitol. I want to thank the citizens for allowing us to go on that. It's of vital importance to have the opportunity to advocate for the needs in Clay County. Uh, good department meetings, uh, not only with the governor's office, the State Park staff, or Kirk, for making sure that, that we were scheduled with that, but also our state senator and representatives. I had the Environment and Natural Resources Policy Committee, updates from Bowser, Executive Director Jashki, and our DNR Commissioner Sarah Straumann, and Deputy Commissioner Bob Meyer. I did forget to tell Kevin Casenberg when he was here, there are a couple of parcels in regards to the buffer strip that have been identified as public waters in northern Clay County. They come into the, they're outside of Clay County, not as public waters. As soon as they enter Clay County, they're public waters, and then they're not when they leave Clay County. So, that's a little bit of a discrepancy, just to see where those, um, stand in terms of reclassifying those. So, he was going to, his department's gonna reach out to the SWCD and let them know. Uh, both Commissioner Gross and I attended the One Watershed One Plan presentation. It's, uh, exciting for us to sit there and hear all the things that are happening statewide with those projects, since both our watersheds have really moved quite far in terms of planning for that. So, they've done, the staff has done a lot of work to get that done, and we're wrapping, as Kevin said, wrapping those up, uh, here shortly. I think the opportunity to, uh, complete some projects really is important, and that's why I'm supportive of that One Watershed One Plan. I had the Extension Committee meeting. We had an update on rural mental health. Uh, very great information that came out of that, and there are hotlines and websites available, free of charge, to our residents that may be experiencing crisis. So, I don't know if, uh, both the Minnesota Department of Agriculture has those, and Extension has those. I don't know if there's a, a place on our website that we can put those numbers, but, um, as I had said, if it, if it helps save one person in a crisis, I think it's definitely worth any effort there. And, uh, also the Cast Clay Food Systems Advisory Meeting. If you saw in the paper yesterday, there is a blueprint document, um, available for citizens to see what the counties and cities are doing in regards to weed spraying. So, there's a blueprint available on that website, um, and contact numbers to get in contact for your jurisdiction. And in the coming months, we will be having stakeholder meetings with the different municipalities to update them what the Food Commission has accomplished in the five years that we've been meeting. That concludes my reports.
Kevin?
Okay, the, um, of course, the AMC Legislative Conference took up most of the week. A couple of things in there. I, it's, one of the things that I found really interesting was during our breakfast and the, the time period for, um, just dialogue with other commissioners kinda outside of meetings was the, was the, I was surprised at the topic of score funding, how, how all these counties are latching on to, to that issue. So, that was kinda interesting to see that. Um, there was a little bit of discussion about the Second Amendment deal that's, that's being talked about out there, and I think there's a lot of counties, uh, that are kinda waiting to see some, get some opinions on that from, um, AMC and, um, Department of Justice or whatever. I think you could maybe comment on that a little bit, Steve, but, um, there's a, um, I, the, um, I, I think we had some really good, um, meetings. We were fortunate to meet with some, a representative of the governor's office, so that was really good. Uh, the two things that we spoke about there were, of course, the transfer station issue and the, even though it wasn't really his realm, he kinda listened in on, on this whole score funding deal. I say, I think he was happy to hear about, um, that area and how that fund has grown, but yet what we've, uh, what we're getting is just remained the same, so. Um, and on Thursday morning, we had the Transportation Infrastructure Policy Meetings. Uh, nothing really new there, so to speak. Um, they had some, um, uh, different discussions, and a lot of it was, was going on was, uh, discussions about what had transpired the day before Cap, at the Capitol Building, and, and then I had to leave early to get back in, into Morehead for a meeting late that afternoon, a diversion authority meeting, which I'll go into next. And that one, um, primary issues there, primary things of interest, uh, was, um, Executive Director Paulson has, was brought to us and said how, uh, the reorganization efforts that are going on in terms of, um, probably bringing more admin locally here. Uh, he told us that we're basically gonna be seeing a two-million-dollar savings in shifting from, work from what was the PMC group, you know, back to the executive director area. So, that was a, that was a really good sign, and it, it just goes to show that, that we're doing everything we can to, to reduce these costs wherever we can. Uh, we did enter into an audit engagement agreement with Aid Bailey regarding the three years of audits of the diversion authority. There's been a lot of discussion, and there's been some people who, uh, who haven't liked this project. They've been anxious to see an audit, so we're, we're not waiting for somebody else to do it. We're gonna, we're gonna, we agreed to do it ourselves and, and go from there, so. Um, then we received a report from the Business Leaders Task Force that they continue to, um, work on this project, uh, moving forward. And, um, we did, we did have, uh, Executive Director Joe Paulson has also started a, a education session series that we're gonna have at every one of our meetings, and, and this one was, uh, more in-depth involvement to what is a P-three project. And so, it was, you know, it was really enlightening to see all the different components and, and the difference that where, um, responsibilities and risks lie, uh, in a P-three project versus a typical government project. So, very interesting, and I, hats off to Joe Paulson. He's really, uh, bringing a lot of, really bringing a lot of things that some, some new internally here, but making it more, more public awareness, so. And that concludes my report.
Sure do. Um, on February twenty-fifth, twenty-sixth, and twenty-seventh, I attended the AMC Legislative Conferences along with the fellow commissioners and some of the people from the county. Um, and then on, uh, on Wednesday, of course, we all went over to the Capitol and, and met with Dominic McCurry, the governor's assistant, about the transfer station and, and the aforementioned score funding. And then on, uh, on Thursday, I attended the, uh, Health and Human Services, uh, Policy Committee meeting, and, uh, we were addressed by the newly appointed Department of Human Services Commissioner Jody Harpstead, and then, uh, she's the former CEO of Lutheran Social Services. And then after Jody was done with her presentation, uh, then we were addressed by Health Services Commissioner Jan Malka, the Minnesota Department of Health Director, and she presented track, strategies and tactics, uh, to present, prevent the spread of the coronavirus. And, uh, I, I noticed last night she was on the news, uh, talking about many of the same things that she presented to us. And, uh, it's kind of a wait-and-see situation we're in right now. And, uh, that was it. That's my report.
Yeah, I attended the AMC Conference also in St. Paul, and, uh, went to the, uh, rural counties meeting on Tuesday night, and there were, it was a legislative meeting. There were four, four or five legis, four, I think, legislators there, and, uh, both Democrats and Republicans, and, uh, a lot of their discussion, a lot of people were interested, of course, how the bonding, uh, if there's gonna be a bonding bill, and how big it's going to be. And I think both sides, I, I thought was encouraging. They both seemed to think there's gonna be a decent bonding bill this year, which bodes well for us with, finally with our project, uh, and the transfer station. And then I went to the various meetings with legislators during the week, and Governor spoke at one of the luncheons, and, uh, went to the Public Safety Committee meeting, and there was a presentation there on, uh, from a dispatch center in Minnesota, and what the life of a dispatcher is like, and, and that was it for me.
Okay, I myself was also down at the meetings for three days. Uh, the MRC meeting, you know, we talked about the score funding and stuff like that, and the money that's not coming back to the counties, but they were also talking about the, the solid waste tax that's going on, you know? They're, they taking ninety million dollars of solid waste tax money, and we get back a hundred eighty-six thousand out of that.
Well, the counties get back seventeen million. Clay County gets a hundred eighty-six thousand.
Yeah, right, so, I mean, yes, that's our share that we get back out of the ninety million that's taken in, so. Uh, they're very concerned about getting that, uh, you know, if you take it in for solid waste tax and give it back for, for the utilizing it that way. Uh, MRC, I guess it's been in business now for twenty-five years. Uh, another thing they were discussing was the cost of electricity. Is there, electric cars are coming more into, uh, into use? And they were talking about the cost of electricity in greater Minnesota and on Minneapolis than in St. Paul. They're talking about electricity being cheaper down there than out here. So, uh, it could be a difference in operating a electric car. Um, this, how much electricity you use, I suppose, all depends how much you're driving. Uh, they're talking about prisoners not, uh, covered by insurance once they get into the, into the prisons. You know, they're not being picked up by their, their own, Medicare and stuff like that. They talked about the volunteer bill, uh, which, uh, drivers have to provide their insurance and stuff like that, uh, different things. The volunteers aren't covered. They have to, they're talking about them, they have to get a commercial license possibly to, uh, cover themselves. Uh, One Watershed One Plan, which Jenny already covered, uh, this is interesting. Well, even Kevin talked about, you know, how different, uh, we're concerned about the Buffalo Watershed and the Wild Rice. They're both working on their, on their plans, and the Buffalo's out ahead of it a little bit, you know, but it's the same person that's working on both plans. It's, uh, the same gal that's doing, doing both plans, so I think they're coming along real good. The Second Amendment, I thought that was interesting, 'cause I know, I had a gentleman call me about three times, and I was concerned in this Second Amendment policy. And, um, there's four counties that have already passed it, and Roseau pretty much spoke pretty highly about the Second Amendment, you know, and, uh, Juanina Conning was also there, and they talked about it, but, uh, I think at that meeting, there was, it seemed more of a.
I also was with you this past week and attended the AMC conference, just to touch base on the Second Amendment. The county, Minnesota County Attorneys Association is going to be coming out with a recommendation for counties here within March, and NACO is also going to be providing their interpretation of the Second Amendment, Second Amendment issue here within the next couple of weeks, and so we should have some additional information there. Outside of the AMC conference, I've continued to work with MCIT in providing, I'm sure we have in coverage for Minnesota County, or City/County JPA. We actually have a conference, a phone conference tomorrow with them, with MCIT, and hoping of securing the insurance. I've also been working with a number of people reviewing the information on our regional dispatch center. We've had a few different conversations with that. Commissioner Wayland and Campbell are, are assigned to that committee. They're, they're in the process of conducting the spatial needs and the staffing needs for, for our regional dispatch facility, and will be coming out, we'll have some additional meetings here later this month. I did also just want to touch base, I've had conversations with Kathy McKay. Our public health has, has really led the way in, in the number of the virus issues that we've had over the last few decades, and just to let the commissioners know and our citizens that Kathy and her staff are involved in bi-weekly conferences with, with the Department of Health and CDC. They're also partnering with different agencies in, in the Fargo-Morehead area, Cass Public Health, Sanford, Assentia VA, Family Healthcare, FM Ambulance, our first responders, emergency management, and our law enforcement agencies to, to stay up to date on the issues with this virus. And so with that, that concludes my report.
Okay. Mr. Chair, if I can, I did forget to, while we're in St. Paul, we did have a, we did have that meeting with MCIT regarding the Prairie Lakes solid waste facility. There's four waste energy facilities in Minnesota, and MCIT had learned that they were not going to be able to establish reinsurance for portions of that. So ultimately, what's happening is for the year 2020, they, they did come up with a insurance company, but they're, they're underwriting some of it themselves to the tune of over $1 million, and they are going to be cost sharing the $800,000 of that, and the remainder is going to be billed out proportionally to the values, I think it was, of each facility. So Prairie Lakes is going to get an additional bill, which we had been talking about. And that, that's kind of, that's just kind of a one, one-year solution right now, so there's a lot of concerns about where that might go moving forward. I did ask the question, what, what's the difference between not wanting to insure that facility versus, say, a $40 million correctional facility? You know, it seems to me that a building is a building, but I think, I think what they talked about is that the fire risk, because we're, they're burning. There's a lot of insurance companies who are beginning to be afraid of that. And quite frankly, I think it boils down to more than that. I think it's because it's a waste energy title, and I think there's a lot of people who, politically now, there's a lot of movement against waste energy, and so I don't know if that's entering into this or not, but the politics of it will continue for, into next year, so. And I do want to note, too, on, on the back of this calendar, it does not show the township officers meeting on the.
Township officers. Yeah, I just got that information.
March 16th? Yeah, okay. So just so everybody knows that that's Monday, the 16th.
Okay. Oh, MCIT, I attended a meeting there, too, that they had, they were talking about reinsurance of, of insurance, you know, they have to be reinsured of it. I hope someone down there understands it a lot better than I did.
Well, you know, what it, what it boils down to is, is, is a, you know, MCIT knows what they can cover and pay out on their own, as that's affordable. And in any risk over and above that, they go out and buy more insurance.
Right.
And that's what, that's what's referred to as the reinsurance, so. And that's the piece where nobody wants to provide that reinsurance coverage anymore.
Right, and that's right, as Rob was talking about, that they're having trouble finding people.
Right.
To cover them, so. All right, anything else? Not for adjournments.[1750.21]